Connecting to people. And so, like, street art does that in a way that's, you know, you really can't imitate any other way.
Hopefully, we can inspire and leave people feeling good, good about where they're at, or potentially wanting to strive for more in their life.
Go with the flow, shift. Do something you've never done before. I'm doing something I've never done before, but it's something that I've always wanted to do. I've always wanted to be a muralist.
Whether you're pan frying bacon, beef, or pork, or deep frying potatoes, chicken, or your holiday turkey, there will be leftover fat or used cooking oil to dispose of. Never pour that fat, oil, or grease into a sink, toilet, or storm drain. It creates a buildup that can cause costly backups and overflows in plumbing and sewer systems, and it can pollute our local waterways. To properly dispose of fat left over from pan frying, pour it into a metal container that has a lid, then put the container of cooled fat into your garbage to keep it out of plumbing and local waterways. That cooking oil left over from deep frying should be recycled. First, let the oil cool down, strain out any food particles, and pour the oil into a container. Then, drop off the container at the nearest full-service recycling center. The used cooking oil will be converted into biodiesel fuel. For more information, go to LouisvilleMSD.org/athome.
So I'm active in my community in trying to find out collaborators as far as breaking down issues that are impacting all of us. I was sort of apprehensive because I'm suspicious of government entities. However, I am glad that I came because of the information, being able to share it, getting more people involved, so each of us can be a link in the chains for transformation and breaking down institutional systemic racism and impactful things in regards to gun violence that is pervasive in our community. I saw it on social media, but a lot of folks are not on social media, so getting it in the newsletters, getting it to the churches, neighborhood barber shops, to spread the word about what's going on.
You told me not to talk to strangers. You told me not to cross the street without looking both ways.
You told me not to touch a stone. You told me not to do drugs. You told me not to drink and drive.
You gave me so many messages about how to stay safe. Why didn't you keep me safe by properly storing your gun?
It's really a privilege to join it all here today and celebrate the achievements and successes and promises of these 16 fabulous recruits who are becoming officers.
Your success will be determined by your ability to listen, your ability to communicate, and your ability to empathize. Your job as the total law enforcement is to go in and assess, assess the needs of the individual who is asking you for help.
When I was two years old, my father was actually murdered in Louisville. And since then, I've kind of had a calling to be a police officer because I wanted to be the guy that helped people and to solve those situations and things like that. We just had graduation. It was a great ceremony. We all just became police officers, so it's unreal. It's a great feeling.
I feel like it's absolute full circle. His father was murdered, so it was very, very important to me to instill in my boys morals and values. Everything that I've instilled in him, he is going to use on the street.
Police work, there's a lot of different aspects to it. I'm blessed and fortunate to be able to have learned how to handle those different aspects and then go out there in the community and successfully apply those tools I've been given.
I feel excitement, I'm overjoyed, and scared. I have mixed emotions. I am proud of him, and I just feel like everything that we went through has come full circle to celebrate today.
My main thing that kept me going was my family. I mean, my fiancee, she was there for me through a lot. My mother was there for me a ton. I called her all the time. Having a family-oriented mindset is huge in policing and even in the academy.
When he would call me and say he had a hard day at the academy, I just pushed him. I would give him words of encouragement and tell him that there is nothing that you are going to accomplish that isn't going to be hard.
Three of today's graduates were born in other countries. One in Ukraine, one in Liberia, and one in a refugee camp in Kenya.
Even though we had a small class, we still had a lot of diversity. We had some fun times, some funny moments, just because the cultures are different and everything like that. It was truly a blessing to have such a diverse group of people, because that's what the community needs. We need diversity. I know my classmates are ready to get started. I think we have a great group. I think that they're ready, and they're going to be great officers.
Since he was, I would say, five, maybe six years old, he always said that if he didn't go in the NFL, he was going to be a police officer. So to see him become a police officer is absolutely amazing.
Your ability to take these individuals by their hand and lift them up and above the situation they're in, that determines our success. That's the work that we have in front of us.
It means the world to me, honestly. It means that I can go out here and serve my community and help people that need help. You know, they always tell us in the academy that people call 911 because they need us on their worst days. And I love the fact that I'm going to be able to be that person to help someone in that situation when they're on their worst day, they're having their worst day. This job gives me the opportunity to truly serve my community. And if you want to help the community and be in the community and actually make a difference, this job is definitely for you.
He has achieved his lifetime goal, and I am just blessed beyond belief to be here to witness it.
We're almost there. The world is opening up again.
But to truly get back to what you love...
You need the vaccine.
Developed through extraordinary research and testing...
It is a safe and incredibly powerful tool in the fight against COVID-19.
Enjoy life to the fullest.
To get back together again.
And most importantly...
To protect yourself.
And those of...
Put your recyclables through the slot in the lid. Recycle paper, cardboard, food and beverage cartons, plastic bottles and containers, glass bottles and jars, aluminum pans and wrap, and metal cans. Styrofoam and plastic bags and wrap are not accepted. These dumpsters are not for electronics, yard waste, hazardous materials, or any large items. Go to LouisvilleKY.gov/recyclemap to find a drop-off recycling location near you.
Summer's here, and that means so is the Cultural Pass. Come and cross the bridge to creativity by signing up for your 2022 Cultural Pass passport. To get your passport, stop by your local library, find a librarian to assist you, and say...
Hello, we're here to pick up our Cultural Pass.
The librarian will ask you a few questions and then sign you up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now that you have the Cultural Pass, you're all set to explore. Open your passport to check out all the amazing offerings from more than 50 arts, culture, and heritage organizations across the region. When you arrive at a participating venue, your passport is your ticket in. Show your passport at the door. The attendant will scan the barcode and stamp the inside. Then you're all set. Continue to use the passport throughout the entire summer and visit as many locations as you'd like.
When it comes to making plans, you are the best. Those nine months were also 273 days of planning. What about your daughter's first costume party? It was out of this world. And let's not forget those barbecues you plan in detail for your family and your more vegetarian-by-the-day best friends. That surprise party for your parents' golden anniversary? You get the golden planning. The same way you plan each detail for those moments. Start planning to protect you and your loved ones from a natural disaster. Sign up for local weather and emergency alerts. Prepare an emergency kit and make a family communications plan. Protecting your family is the best plan you can make.
It's a great morning, good feeling out. We've got a nice little breeze. There's a lot of fog, but hey, it's part of it. We have birds chirping, people walking by, coming to observe the game, so it's a great and good feeling out here today.
Good job, buddy. I enjoy getting up every Saturday to come and watch them play.
I really like this program. It's good for the kids because now it's not really a lot of programs out here for kids to participate in, especially for you.
Good job, good job. It's all right, it's all right.
I definitely don't want to miss out, you know, on the moments with my son, and he enjoys it, and so it makes me enjoy it being his mom.
Our leagues are mainly about having fun. They get competitive, but our main focus is having fun and teaching the kids how to play and how to build friendships. A lot of the kids, this is their first league or first sport ever, and they love it.
This is actually our first year with Metro Parks. We love it, and so we will be back each and every year.
Thank you, everybody, so much for being here.
A place where people can really connect and engage is in our Ambassador Institute.
We're so grateful for you all to be here.
The Ambassador Institute is for everybody.
This program has been something on our must-do list.
It is the first in-person event since February 2020.
Jean says that mine is a state of mind. What else?
We lost our son, Anthony Jr., in 2015 to homicide, and this is a plaguing thing in our community.
If you ever wanted to get plugged into this type of work, this is definitely the opportunity to do so.
And we just want to know, like, where do we connect with other people that are really serious about doing the work?
Balance does not discriminate. The last 20 years, I've been involved in some level of social services and activism in our community.
We utilize that space to build capacity of everyday citizens. Metro TV, we're going to start in one minute. Good afternoon. This is the Louisville Metro Council Budget Committee regular meeting. It's actually a special meeting because we're starting a half hour earlier. It's 4:33 on Monday, June, I'm sorry, Thursday, June 2nd. And we have several things on the agenda today, but we are only taking up one item, and that is Ordinance 16222, the ARP Round Four. And I'll call for that in just a minute. The TARC budget, we will not be taking up today, and the reason is because I'm not sure that we're going to have, we would have time to give that full consideration today. We have a hard stop at 6:00 p.m. tonight because we have about 40 people signed up for a public hearing, the second of our public hearings on the FY23 budget. So we will, we will stop, no matter whether we're done or not, at 6 o'clock to be ready for that public hearing tonight. With the 40 people, just for council members, I would anticipate that that would last until 8:15 or 8:30. You know, we have three-minute speakers. Sometimes people don't speak. We have many more people in person this time than we have had previously. There are, continue to be some people who signed up yesterday and will be joining us virtually for that meeting. So the one item that we have to call today is 016222, an ordinance approving a fourth round of the American Rescue Plan ARP local fiscal recovery funding to various Louisville Metro government departments to address the continued impact of COVID-19 on the economy, public health, state, and local governments, individuals, and business. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Engel.
And a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, and the ordinance is before us. So this was filed some time ago. We've continued to work on it and look at various options, and there is, in the system now, a revised Schedule A. So the way these ARP ordinances have been done, there is an ordinance, and then all the details are on a schedule. And so there is a revised Schedule A. If we want to put that before us, if someone wants to move the revised Schedule A, I can explain what's in it.
Make a motion to take up revised Schedule A? Second.
All in favor of hearing the revised schedule? Say aye.
Aye.
All right, so the revised schedule is before us. So this is, this is, as I said, a continuation of the ARP funding. There is a total of $73,249,353 in ARP funds in this. These projects have come out of the Healthy Louisville, Healthy Neighborhoods Work Group, the Public Safety Work Group. There's some money for compliance and reporting, and one project has come out of the Workforce Development Work Group. In terms of what was initially proposed and are being deferred, that doesn't mean necessarily they won't come up again, but are being deferred at this point, there's some money from Healthy Louisville, Healthy Neighborhoods, a $2 million appropriation for implementation of an electronic health record system. I think I can speak for everyone that we think an electronic health record system is extremely important. I know that was the view of the Healthy Louisville, Healthy Neighborhoods Work Group. There is some question about whether a state plan and a state appropriation will develop a system that will be adequate to the needs of Louisville Metro. And so I think what the idea of removing that at this point, deferring it, if you will, is to see whether, in fact, there is a, is a system that's coming from the state at state expense, which will work well with us and which would allow us to communicate better with other health departments. That may or may not be true, and I do think we want to continue to explore that. There's a slight change to the Berrytown Park proposal to say that we are improving the park, but to not necessarily dedicate that to tennis courts. Councilman Winkler may want to speak about that. I think there's some ongoing public engagement about that. There is, in addition, no additional money to the swimming pools fund to talk about, in addition to funding renovations to Algonquin and Norton, to fund a new spray ground near the Louisville Loop-Lamburn Boulevard Trailhead. Again, that's money that we think the funds that are available and from previous appropriations and this $5 million would be enough to fund both Algonquin, or all three, Algonquin, Norton, and the spray ground. And finally, we have taken out the Simmons College Program at this point while we continue to work on the proposal. We need a little bit more detail on a new proposal and also some legal opinions about the, whether that proposal is compliant with ARP guidelines. So that's where we are. That's what we've done. We have speakers here, many in the audience and some online, who can speak to every one of these proposals, if you would like. Monica Harmon is here as well. Margaret Handmaker, I think, is in the audience or online, maybe? No, she's right here. She always hides behind the lectern, so I can't see Margaret. But we have people here who are available to talk about any of these projects. And I see Marcus Winkler. Councilman Winkler.
Thank you, Chair Hollander. I want to start by just thanking everybody on the work groups that worked on these initiatives. You know, I think these are great investments across our community and sort of, I'll call it critical infrastructure in terms of things like libraries and parks that are critical that we fund, and this money will allow us to make some needed improvements, reopen some libraries that were closed, renovate other libraries. I think it's a really exciting project list for the city. Councilman Hollander, to your point about Berrytown Park, I'll just comment on this briefly. One tiny technical amendment. The park now technically is in District 17, not 19. The spreadsheet says 19. If that needs to be changed, fine. If not, I don't really care, but just point that out as a technical change. But the reason we've changed it from the tennis courts to just Berrytown Park generally, when a compliment, Councilman Piagentini, he had, prior to redistricting, had Berrytown and funded a neighborhood plan project, which is in the works right now. And we're in sort of the second or third month of that project, and I don't know that it makes sense for us to dictate to the community what should happen in that park versus allowing that process to finish out and then making the investment relative to what the members of the immediate community think is most valuable. One of the things here in particular that's highlighted is the Berrytown Center is home to the Adaptive and Inclusive Recreation Program. There's a lot of activity at that community center. One of the things that Councilman Piagentini and I have talked about is, you know, perhaps the community need there, rather than new tennis courts, is an inclusive playground equipment, as an example. So, again, I don't propose to know the answer to that. I think leaving it to the citizens of that area probably makes the most sense, and so I appreciate the committee's indulgence to change the description from being tennis court-specific to park-specific. So, again, want to applaud everybody for the work on this, and thank you.
I'll just ask the clerk, the proposed change here is, just to correct the district where it says District 19 should be District 17. Is that okay as a technical amendment?
That is the case. This is Sonia Harvard, the clerk, but I just want to make sure that we understand that we're going to do an amendment by substitution to the ordinance to exchange this when we took that amendment earlier.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So the idea here is that the ordinance itself, the written document, does not change, but the exhibit, the Schedule A, is an amendment by substitution. Okay, okay, all right. Do we need to, do we need to have another vote on it? Okay, all right, good, thank you. And we'll correct that from 19 to 17. Councilman Piagentini's in the queue. Also, I do want to say, and I forgot to say this at the beginning, there are work groups that are continuing to meet, including workforce, and Councilman Piagentini, Councilman Winkler have been involved in that. Healthy Neighborhoods, Healthy Louisville also has projects that they would like to see funded. And if we pass this as this amended Schedule A, we would have $67,653,819 that is unallocated, roughly 17% of the total ARP allocation. Councilman Piagentini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to Councilman Winkler for taking the torch and running with it on the neighborhood plan in Berrytown, and appreciate the change here, which will allow the flexibility there. I did want to highlight also, I know I've spoken about this many, 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 many times, but I don't want to miss the opportunity to highlight that one of these projects is related to brownfield remediation. I still maintain this is a massive, massive problem, particularly in certain communities across this, the county and the metro area. And I'm glad to see we're making a really significant investment, at least in one of those areas. But, you know, this is something where, through the budget process and/or through Develop Louisville or somebody, we need to keep moving this needle down the pathway, because this is only one of a couple projects that really need to be moved. But I'm just happy about that, and we'll echo what Councilman Winkler said about, or excuse me, Chairman, what you said about the ongoing process that we're doing. I also will say that regarding the EMR, I've been talking to, I've talked fairly, I've got a little background in some of that issue. I've spoken to the state, I've spoken to President James about it. There's a commitment to meet with the Department of Public Health to figure out what the right solution is there, because there are some concerns about their current contract expiring and when the state, and trust me, I've done state procurements in a prior life, and even in the best of circumstances, you could be talking a multi-year timeline to get anything off the ground. So even with the best of commitments and funding, so, but I think we need to, so that is not, I just want to make it clear to the public, certainly to public health, that is not dead or gone. It's just we need to have a little more dialogue on the best and most economical solution, because a statewide EMR would be the best solution that all the public health agencies were tied into. But we also need to maintain our data. We also need to, the transition plan needs to be good, and we don't want to waste taxpayer dollars at the same time. So there's a heavy commitment, both for myself and a President James and others, to meet with public health and figure that out and get a proposal back to us as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And let me just say one other thing about public health. When I talked about the changes from the original document, there's a reduction in the FY23 COVID Essentials by about $5 million. And I know we've had some discussion about that. I see Connie Mendel in the audience. But I also know that, I want everybody to know that that is not something that we reduced on our own here at the council, that the public health department has been talking about, what they think is needed for the COVID-19 Essentials and FY23, and that number is now their number. Councilman Engel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to comment and say that on behalf of the Friends of the Fern Creek Library, thousands of residents of southeast Jefferson County, many folks that I actually knew sort of personally that actually blame me for closing the library, I say I'm very excited tonight to see that we are appropriating a very healthy amount of money to reopen and build a Fern Creek Library. Also, on behalf of those, for example, that needed and have needed broadband, less fortunate people that have not been able to visit a library in this particular area, I'm very, very excited. And the good news is that we have a site, we have a site, and we will be closing on the site in the next 90 days. So this is an accelerated project. I do want to thank Jeff O'Brien. Once we came together, we accelerated this thing quite quickly. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm pretty excited tonight, and subdued, but excited. So thank you very much, and I look forward to this vote. Appreciate it.
Well, I'm excited, too. There's a, I see Lee Burchfield in the crowd, I bet he's excited, too. There's some really great projects in here, particularly for libraries. The work on the main library is pretty spectacular. And there's continuation money, and not just in Portland and Parkland, but also Fern Creek. So in many of these projects, these are things that we said that we wanted to do as a community began to fund in previous years, and now have the money to complete the projects and really move forward. So it... the money to complete the projects and really move forward. So I'm excited, too. Councilman Arthur.
Thank you so much. Because of my employment with Simmons College of Kentucky, I was not going to debate, vote on, or support this ordinance. But since Simmons is no longer receiving funding in this round, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. I wanted to highlight the allocation for the Baxter Community Center, recreational facility that the Russell neighborhood, the Beecher Terrace residents desperately need reopened. Some members had concerns about programs and long-term funding for some of those programs. And this question might be for our budget chair, but it could also be for Monica Harmon. I'm curious about the community center reopening, and if we would need to adjust the regular city budget for operational costs, or if that has been maintained since the community center has been closed.
Monica Harmon, Office of Municipal Health. Currently existing for that community center. So if it is anticipated that that community center will be open before the end of fiscal year '23, there would need to be funding found, identified within either what's existing or added to the proposed '23 budget.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody, who would know as to when we would be able to reopen that Baxter Community Center?
Marilyn Harris, Director of Develop Louisville, had a conversation today with LMHA to verify, and they are looking at the end of 2023, so that would be fiscal year '24's budget, before that would be reopened, either site.
Okay, thank you. And we have, I've had a similar question about the Parkland Library. So there is not operating money in the budget, as I understand it, for the Parkland Library, and that's because we do not anticipate having the Parkland Library open before the end of the fiscal year. Is that true also?
That is correct. There's nothing for Parkland, however. There is some operational for the last quarter for Portland.
Right. So I think we've covered, you know, it's going to take some time to get some of these construction projects going. Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions. And the first one is about the early learning component. So I don't know who is here to speak to that. But I'm interested to know a little bit about how the funds would be disseminated to providers. So is that read the?
I can take a first crack at that, since I've been pretty closely involved in that. And then I know that we have LeAnn from Public Health that can chime in and answer anything that I miss. So as you can see in the proposal, we've laid out sort of four broad bucket areas, really trying to focus on one-time investments so that we aren't creating ongoing programmatic needs. There are some very detailed targeted programs to address specific delays that we know children have experienced as a result of not being able to socialize, not having access to developmental screens and programs that they normally would have, that have been closed because of COVID and the way that that has impacted their development. But the four buckets are expanding the accessibility and number of quality homes or childcare centers, funding improvements to playgrounds, outdoor learning spaces, or anything that will really improve the quality rating of our childcare facilities, invested in these resources to deal with targeted developmental delays. And any, one that's like a little bit more of a catch-all, but basically programs that we know are evidence-based, that will help our kids that have struggled as a result of COVID. So I think the way that we envision this is trying to make sure that this money remains somewhat flexible as it goes through to be able to be responsive to needs in the community. But like we did with our housing, we sort of said what our priorities were. We then invited applications from people with these goals in mind and said, how much money would you need and what outcomes could you get with that much money in these different spaces, about expanding childcare centers or childcare homes, about more outdoor learning spaces, about more programs to address these sort of targeted needs that we see around COVID. And so I think it would go through an RFA process, just like we did with our housing programs, where we said, we want to spend this much on permanent supportive housing, and then we invited providers to apply for that. Does that answer your question, Councilwoman?
It is a start. And so my next question would be, is there discussion about, again, how the, as part of that process, funds that would be allocated to either qualified census tracts, or to ensure that there's geographic reach to areas in need?
So certainly, I think that where we see the most need in the community does overlap with our low-income areas, our qualified census tracts. We know that this is a racial equity issue as well, and that Black kids do not have the same access to high-quality childcare programs in their neighborhoods. I think that Margaret would probably be the best person to speak to the eligibility. I know that there are some expenditures, some particular types of programs, that we believe would only be eligible if they were located in qualified census tracts. Some of it, some of the more built environment things, I think, could be open to a broader swath of the community, but some of it would only be eligible if it was in qualified census tracts. Certainly, I will say, I think our goal in this that is reflected in the project description is to make sure that we are focusing on this in an equity lens. We know that children that have access to these early learning opportunities are more likely, if we invest in kids young, they have better educational outcomes down the road. They have better, not just educational attainment, but employment prospects. They earn more later on in their career. They're also less likely to be justice involved. And so focusing on all of those sort of holistic reasons for this investment. But did anyone from the metro government side want to speak specifically to eligibility? Margaret, did I accurately state that?
I'm sorry. I'm so used to wearing this. And of course, the answer is complicated, but a general rule of thumb is that if a childcare center is in a qualified census tract, you don't have to prove a direct nexus to COVID. If it's outside of a qualified census tract, you have to address the fact that there is a nexus to COVID.
Margaret, will you just introduce yourself for the record, name and title, please?
Margaret Handmaker, Director of the Louisville Accelerator Team. Sorry.
Thank you. And of course, there are qualified census tracts. That's all available. There are qualified census tracts all over the community. And I assume we'll be looking, I saw someone, I think, from Public Health there also, who may want to speak to this. I don't know. I assume we will be looking at all of those.
Hello, LeAnn French from Louisville Department for Public Health and Wellness. Indeed, we would be looking at all the census tracts that do, would qualify. And as Councilwoman Armstrong has already pointed out, we want to, we understand this is an equity issue at its core, and we would want to focus on data that we already have from, for example, for Metro United Way did a quality and access study, I think as recently as 2018. Mandy?
Yes.
2018, that shows where the access issues are, where the quality issues are, and we could use that as part of a guiding tool as well.
Thank you.
So that answered Matt Ex's question, which is, in addition to census tracts, of course, we saw during our recent debate with land use reform efforts, that we have some gaps in where providers currently are available. And so it's good to hear that that might be considered as part of the application process. My next question is on the Office of Youth Development. And so I'm not sure who is here to speak to that. Of course, I can read the description. So I see we have, you know, concentrated buckets in the Louisville Youth Network and the Youth Development Services Data Center, and I'm interested to learn more about those projects.
Hello, Carla Kirby, Assistant Director of the Office for Youth Development. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Thank you. So regarding, I have here with me, and she has to leave soon, but Dr. Ayesha Brown, she is the Research Director for the University of Louisville Office, well, it's not the Office, it's the Social Justice Youth Development Research Center. And we are contracting with her, should we get this funding on the data, on the youth data center. So I'm going to let you allow her to talk a little bit about the project and the outcomes. And I'll let you go ahead, Dr. Brown.
Sure, thank you. As Carla just shared, Dr. Asha Brown, I am an Assistant Professor at the University of Louisville. I'm also the Director of the Center for Social Justice Youth Development Research there. And so in terms of the data center that's mentioned in the proposal, it is specifically focused in on ensuring that there is a center specifically focused on making sure that the data points and the metrics that we're using to determine decision-making efforts around how young people and ways that we support young people in the city are present. So right now, different organizations are collecting different data points, and that's what's being used to determine funding decisions. But we're not truly sure what that need is. And so having one centralized location where the data is held and multiple organizations working together with the Office of Youth Development to make sure we can track youth outcomes across multiple organizations, that's the goal of the data center. Within that, there is a youth equity report that's also written in there. And that youth equity report is kind of very much modeled after the Health Equity Report in terms of making sure that we know what outcomes exist for young people in Louisville currently. That doesn't necessarily exist. And so we're just trying to, the goal of the data center is to make sure that we have access to that data and it's in one centralized location. So when decisions are being made, for example, around budget time, that we know what the need is. And so we're directing funds in that direction. So to give you all a brief, very brief explanation. I hope that helps. Happy to answer anything else.
Thank you. So do we know what percentage of the $8 million is going toward the data center versus the Louisville Youth Network? That's my first question. My second question is, didn't we previously fund, correct me if I'm wrong, CSYA was doing the equity report. They were, we funded a network for them to be able to capture those needs, remembering that correctly?
I can answer the second question. I believe Carla would need to answer the questions regarding how much funds are going to the data center and how much funds are going to the Louisville Youth Network. But the CSYA was contracted specifically for the rollout of the first phase of the Louisville Youth Network, which was focused on opportunity youth. And so that doesn't encompass what the data center would focus in on, which is all young people between the ages of 10 and 24 in Jefferson County.
And then I can answer the second part regarding the, I don't know the percentages per se, but I do know of the 8.5 million, approximately 220,000 of that over the next three years would be going for the data center. That includes the hiring of a data analyst as well as a data center manager. We also are collaborating closely with Jefferson County Public Schools, and their revolve 502 process. They have been working on a similar project, making sure that everyone is at the table that carries any kind of juvenile or youth-related data. So we're already tapping into that process so that we'll be able to join them. The bulk of the money that we still don't know or have quotes about will be with regard to the platform that we use for the data, you know, for the repository. So we're continuing to contract with Dr. Brown to help us with that. But this already is a community-wide collaborative effort and not just something that we're working with alone. So we have JCPS, we have the State Data Center, we have Kentucky Youth Advocates, Cabinet for Families and Health Services. We're going to be working with LMPD on the juvenile crime data. So it's a very multifaceted, multi-agency endeavor. The main thing will be the platform that we are able to place that data within so that the public has access to it and anyone involved with anything youth-related.
Okay. So that's interesting and helpful. It sounds like the vast majority would be going to actually support the work with the Louisville Youth Network and the economic inclusion piece. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
An actual service provision?
I'm sorry?
Just in service provision?
Yes.
Okay. So would someone like to explain that level of service provision?
Would you repeat the question again, a little bit more in depth?
Could someone please explain the level of service provision that's being recommended here as part of the Louisville Youth Network?
Oh, okay. So currently, within the Louisville Youth Network, and our partners are here, and let me take just a second to introduce them, if you want to ask them any questions about their work. We have Dr. Chabala Sanchez with the Louisville Urban League who's here. They're one of our Louisville Youth Network partners. We have the Coalition Supporting Young Adults with Daryl Young, who is our Executive Director. Charlie Bell, the Program Manager with Goodwill, is here, as well as Cindy Reed with Kentucky Anna the Spot. And this is the Youth Network Agency that we are proposing to add to the Louisville Youth Network, should we get this ARP funding. Right now, all of their work is focused on young people ages 16 to 24. With this funding, we want to add to the Youth Network agencies who represent and support young people ages 10 to 15. We want to be able to have that whole youth, young adult continuum from ages 10 to 24 that we can provide services to and be the coordinating body in function for. So the majority of the funding that we've asked for, I believe, in extended LYN and EAF is 1.9 million over three years. So with that funding, we want to expand that network and add them to the continuum. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. And then last question on youth. How would youth be selected as part of this work? And maybe speak a little bit also about how youth will be, what the engagement will look like to capture those youth ages 10 to 15?
Well, we're still working on our strategic plan for that in anticipation of getting this funding. So there are so many agencies and organizations out there working with this age group, and primarily it's Metro United Way. So we've already established strong partnership with Metro United Way. So we'll be working with them to do cross-planning to make sure that we don't leave any of the agencies out that they're already working with with regard to the BLOCKS program and the out-of-school time initiatives that they're working on. But we know we've really got to get to those younger, early middle school kiddos. So I hope that answers your question. But the answer is, we're still working on that. We know the need is great. We just did an RFP for the Mayor's Safe Summer Blast program. We had over 130, well, we did actually have 138 agencies seeking $2.2 million, working with kiddos elementary school age up to 18. The need is out there. It is great. And we also want to be working with those individuals who have really great ideas. And I've already been working with these agencies on a voluntary basis, but allowing them to grow and build capacity so they can apply for not only Metro grants, but other grants that are available. There's so many federal opportunities coming down to work with folks and young people. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. I guess I just want to say this on the front end of this discussion, and that is, I recognize a tremendous amount of work has gone into creating the proposal. And I see that there are lots of really important needs listed. Most of the allocations reflect health, investments in health. And what I don't see reflected is a lot of assurance that those investments will trickle down to the South End. And I say that in Big South End terms, not just District 21. I don't see a lot of assurance that, as part of that, and I think about the significant health disparities in the communities that I serve experience, and I'll give an example. We know that life expectancy in the South End is 71 years to 77 versus the East End, which is 77 to 82. And I never wanted to be that council member that was myopically focused on one area of the community. But I also recognize that maybe I haven't been as vocal as I should have been about some of the oppressive needs I see in the community. And so when not seeing assurances of how some of these investments will impact And so when not seeing assurances of how some of these investments will impact, again, Big South End, not just District 21, I have a really difficult time supporting the ordinance. The investment that I do see is concentrated in Iroquois Park for five hundred thousand dollars for tennis courts. And if you ask me, is that the prevailing need in District 21, or I'm sorry, District 15, it's closed, or the South End to address health disparities, I would say no. I'm not even sure it's the most prevailing need in Iroquois Park. And I say this as someone who, I'm not a tennis player, but I certainly support tennis. But because of that, I can't in good faith support this ordinance today. Thank you.
Councilwoman, I'll just point out to you and everyone else that the way you change this ordinance, like any other ordinance, is raise your hand and make a motion. And I'll certainly entertain any motions that are made. Councilman, Councilman Arthur.
Thank you so much. Margaret, could we get the original file of project descriptions instead of the scanned version? Please. I wouldn't make my worst enemy scroll through fifty pages just, just to find a couple of key words.
So let me, let me explain, and I was going to do that also, so the public can see it. And I know it's difficult, but it is important for the public to know. If you go to the agenda, you will see ARP Round Four PDF. And that's, that's the document that you're talking about. So it is available. He's asking if it could be better accessible.
The original file?
Margaret Handmaker, Louisville Accelerator Team. Yes, of course.
Thank you so much. I have a question about the Office for Youth Development slash the Office for Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods. I think we have some, some friends in the audience. I'm curious about how the youth boards in each council district would collaborate with the Mayor's Youth Implementation Team, which I'm, I'm not even sure where they are right now in terms of how they're operating. But could you just speak to how those groups would collaborate with one another?
Well, the proposal coming from the Mayor's Implementation Team is going to the National League of Cities through the, through the National Organization of Mayors. And that, or, well, that recommendation has not yet been put forth to that body. So planning has not started on what that would look like. I know from preliminary discussions, what we would like it to look like is that each metro council would be able to, through whatever process they decide, nominate someone in their district to become a member of the Mayor's Implementation Team. So the Mayor's Implementation Team would grow from the number, which is currently, I think, nine or 10 that are actually active, to all twenty-six metro districts. I apologize if I've left any out. And then we would have, you know, we'd, we'd have to staff it, of course. And we want to be able to give these young people stipends or, and to incentivize their time so that they would participate. Then through the other neighborhood youth boards that are going to be located throughout the metro, the metro districts, they would be able to communicate to their youth representative within their division what's going on in their neighborhoods and what types of projects that they would like to fund. So then Ocean and OID in turn would fund those projects based on maybe some kind of competitive process. So I hope that answers your question.
Somewhat. I'm also wondering if we could get a commitment with the regular city budget, but also with ARP funding from OID, from Oceans, to work with our youth who are justice-involved. When I first came on this council, I remember seeing a report around the youth network. And there were maybe a few dozen young people who, who had case management and had been connected to services. And then just a couple of weeks ago, we are talking with Youth Transitional Services, hundreds of young people who have been incarcerated. And it seems to be a huge disconnect between metro agencies, where we have young people who are desperately in need of your services that you offer, that we appreciate so much. But they aren't being referred, they aren't being connected with those services. And it just seems like a huge missed opportunity if we're funding these programs, multimillion-dollar programs, and the people, the young people who need them the most aren't even being referred to them. So I would love to have a commitment from both offices to make sure that you're working with young people who are justice-involved.
Well, actually, we are. Through Ocean, and I know Paul Callan mentioned it a couple of weeks ago when he was before council, but we have a referral process through JCPS. And I think JCPS is referring as eighty young people in the school system that have been or are currently involved in the justice system based on, you know, handguns and possession of handguns. I come from a background in juvenile justice, sixteen years, Assistant Director at the Detention Center. I have a very good working relationship with Ms. Davis and the facility. And we are working closely with them to help them with their new assessment center. So assurance is yes, and I know I can speak on behalf of Monique Williams, too, our Executive Director. But we are working with them and our work interfaces with Ocean and the outreach team and the work they're doing. So they, each of our outreach workers have a caseload currently of about fifteen JCPS students that they're going to be working with all summer. And all of these youths are going to have access to any of the programs and services in the community.
That's very encouraging. Because when their team was over here a couple of weeks ago and we asked, how are you working with Oceans? I think it was the director. She looked at me like I had an eye in the middle of my forehead. So, so I appreciate the answer you just gave. But again, there seems to be a huge disconnect between those agencies. And I really hope moving forward, we can make sure our young people are well taken care of because you all do incredible work between Oceans and OID. And I just want to make sure that it's reaching the people it's intended to reach. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilman Kramer.
If it's okay, I was going to shift gears to Chickasaw Park Pond, or Chickasaw Park. For, for those who are following along, we have recognized for some time now that there were problems with the Chickasaw Park Pond. And a large number of years ago, there was some work done around that, around the park and around the pond specifically to restore it to, to an amenity that the public could feel good about using. It wasn't very long after all of that work was done that, that, several years after tests were run and there were problems in the pond again, and there was pollution. And so it felt like the work that we had done there might not have paid off. Changes have been made around that park over the last several years. And the levels of pollutants in the sediment in the pond and among the fish that are taken out of the pond are better. I don't want to go so far as to say, you know, grab your fishing rod and head down there, although it's probably safe. What we want to do is make sure that we take probably out of that scenario. And so this project will, in fact, drain the pond, take care of the worst of the dock, take care of the worst of the dock, well, take care of all the docks that are there, restore the pond. And then they will allow that the Kentucky Fish and Wildlife will come back in afterwards and restock this pond so that they'd be able to use it for, people will be able to use it for fishing, for kayaking, for canoeing, all the kinds of things that we know people would want to use a neighborhood pond for. But people are somewhat uncomfortable. And I was going to ask Margaret Brasco from Parks if she wouldn't mind coming forward and clarifying anything that I might have just messed up and offering any additional comments to, to inform folks what it is that we're hoping to accomplish with this project.
Great, thanks, Councilman Kramer. Margaret Brasco, Acting Director of Louisville Parks and Recreation. First, I just want to thank you all for your support of parks. This is a historic day if this goes through with all of the projects. Specifically Chickasaw Pond Project, this is a collaborative effort that's been going on a long time. The Center of Health Equity, a lot of neighborhood groups and users have also been part of this. But to your point, right, you want to take out any uncertainty and make sure that people feel safe and confident. And that's why we did extensive outreach and involvement with the community to make sure that they were a part of this process from the beginning. So besides what you said, I think the only other things that you missed, it's important to note that we will be teaming up with the state from a water quality standpoint and the Kentucky Fish and Wildlife Department. And also we'll be taking regular and routine fish tissue samples as well, just once again, to make sure that everybody understands that, that things are safe. We want people to utilize this, this pond. Doesn't make any sense if people don't feel comfortable getting in on a canoe or fishing. So we'll take a great pride in that.
Thank you.
President James.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Margaret, could you come back up, please? Hi. I wanted to go back to the conversation about the tennis courts, the ones that Councilwoman George brought up. Are, are there going to be tennis courts? Are there going to be pickleball courts? Are there going to be tennis ball, tennis and pickleball? Or what, what's the plan?
The plan is to ask the community exactly what they want in those particular courts. We get more calls about the tennis courts at Iroquois Park than any other amenity in that park. So there's two sections. There's an upper section and a lower section of courts. So really, the, the options are endless. We could keep them at, the footprint will remain the same. So we can keep them as is, all tennis courts. We can do half pickleball, half tennis courts, a combination of anything. But we'll definitely get input from Councilwoman George if she supports this along with the other South Louisville council members and anyone else who has any thoughts or ideas on that. But also, we're going to engage the public to see what they want.
Thank you. And then my second question is, has there been any work with the USTA, you know, they give grants when we put money in tennis courts to help pay for that?
We do work with the USTA. Actually, Councilwoman Stewart was here a minute ago. They're working with her on a summer camp this summer. So we do work hand-in-hand with them to provide programming opportunities at different locations. It's been some years since they've made investments into, into the courts. But we do continue to ask if there's a particular area that they'd be willing to help us with.
Are we going to ask them on, on these tennis courts?
We can, we could ask them, yes. The last ask we, we made were a couple of different parks, but we certainly can ask them about Iroquois.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman George.
Thank you. And I certainly appreciate the attention on Iroquois. So I have a couple of questions, maybe for Margaret. I'm surprised to hear that the majority of the calls that you get for Iroquois pertain to the tennis courts. I would say as someone who spends a healthy amount of time engaged in the community, that is not what I'm hearing. So maybe it's just me. But I'm reading the proposal, and the proposal specifically references tennis courts. And it's interesting because it also, you know, references the population who live closest to the community. So I'm wondering if in the calls that you get, do you track, are these people who live in the community? Or where are the calls coming from for tennis?
I'll have to check with our community engagement team to see if they have a location on those calls. I think it's, it's key to say the amenity use, right? So if people call and say, we get the most calls of like, hey, when are you going to redo those tennis courts? Hey, can you redo those tennis courts? So people call, as you know, about all kinds of things. But as far as an improvement in the park goes, that's what we hear most about.
Okay, so that's a good distinction, which is it's the most calls for amenities. We don't know where those calls are coming from. And I guess just because it was referenced in the proposal about the concentration of foreign-born population, I'm wondering what the outreach has been with the foreign-born population to identify the needs around tennis.
We could get into that, we can get those details for you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Arthur.
Thank you. Library question. So, so Lee, come on up. I know that the West End libraries have put together a work group to look at just making some changes, some improvements to meet the needs of Western residents. Do you have any sort of update from that work group?
Sure. So Lee Birchfield, Director of the Louisville Free Public Library. What Councilman Arthur's referring to is a patron engagement project that we've been working on for about four months so far. We have a work group of about twelve to fourteen people that includes the branch managers from the Portland, Western, and Shawnee branches, as well as members of the library's management team and also a representative from the Library Foundation because we're looking to them for some funding for some of the ideas that come out of this. And what we've been doing is taking a Six Sigma approach to continuous improvement and looking at all aspects of the success with which we are engaging the communities in the service areas around those three West End branches. So we started with, excuse me, we started with looking at the data. For example, questions like, how many residents are there in the service area? What percentage of those residents have a library card? What percentage of those who have a library card have been actively using the library? And the work group has been spending its time generating ideas for how we could improve on one or more of those metrics. So how do we get more households to have a card in them? How do we get a higher percentage of the card-holding residents to be active in the library? What we have right now is a list of, I would say, and I'll be happy to send you some, some more detailed information on this or even set up a meeting if you want. We have a list of five or six action plan items that have been generated so far that we are actively pursuing accomplishing as quickly as possible. For example, one of the things that we've heard repeatedly is that the Western branch, even though it's been there for as long as it has, is not easily recognizable to traffic moving along Chestnut Street as a library. So we're looking at ways to do better signage there, maybe some colorful banners on the sides of the library. But we're also coming up with ideas that, that are more old-school, sending out information to every household that doesn't have a card, telling them about services available at the library, telling them how to get a card, and trying to just find ways to, to engage more with them. The other thing that we're doing is working with IQS, who has a contract with metro government, to do research. And IQS is going to be doing some mail surveys to collect information from within the community about the reasons why people may not be engaged with the library. Are the services not the right services? Is there a lack of awareness of what the library provides? Are the hours inconvenient? Are the locations inconvenient? Are there transportation issues? And I think that's also going to generate a lot of opportunity for us to come up with some more improvement ideas.
Thank you. Could you briefly describe floating and confirm which West End libraries have turned floating off?
I, I probably should, should not try to confirm which branches have turned floating off. Honestly, I, I think it's all of them, but particularly, especially Western. But that is certainly one of the things that's on the table as part of the, the engagement project. So floating is a process that we use at the library. Most of you are probably aware that any, any resident with a library card can go to their local branch. If the library that they go to doesn't have an item, they can request that item and have it sent to their local branch so that they can pick it up. So our computer system identifies an available copy, our staff pick it, ship it to that branch. What floating does is cause that item, once it has been shipped to another branch, to stay at that branch, whereas previously, everything would go back to the location that was its home branch. Floating is something that particularly urban public libraries started doing to try to reduce the volume of material that is coming through their sort operation. So for example, at the, the main library in our sort area in the basement, we generally would process about fifty thousand items a month that were in transit from one location to another. By turning on floating, you dramatically reduce that. One of the unintended consequences of floating, though, is that there are branches where people have better access to technology, where they, they have maybe better transportation and can pick up holds, and they tend to request more items. And the unintended consequence is that we buy new materials for a library like the Western branch, which is very small, has very small collection. Those items end up getting tagged to fill holds at another location somewhere else in the county. And as a result, when patrons come to the Western library, they don't see the selection that they should have. I, I feel certain we turned off floating at Western and maybe at the other neighborhoods there. But that is exactly the sort of thing we're looking at as part of this larger project.
And I ask because I wanted to see if there had been any conversations about turning off floating for Parkland so that the material that comes to that library can stay at that library.
Yeah, we, we certainly can, can do that. What we also traditionally do whenever we open a new library What we also traditionally do whenever we open a new library, is that for a period of time after that library first opens, those materials just don't go anywhere. They're, they're for local checkout only, because we want people to come and experience what that library's like. But, yes, we will definitely take all of that into consideration.
Thank you, and I know the residents of Parkland are excited to have their libraries back.
I, I'm excited to see it open myself.
Lee, I have one more question for you.
Sure.
So, we know that it's going to take a little while to get Parkland to reopen its library. We talked about the operating money. I'm very excited about Portland, and I assume residents in that area are very excited also. When do you think, assuming this passes tonight, and then at council next week, when do you think, you'd obviously have to get some bids, when do you think we'd see some activity on the renovation and expansion of that building?
Sure. So, so, there are two different branches that you talked about, I'm assuming you'd like
I'm talking about, I'm talking about Portland now, right?
Okay, Portland.
Right.
Okay. So, Portland is the one that I think we can start the quickest on, right?
Right.
Because we do still have the issue at Parkland, that there's another metro agency using that.
Correct.
We already have received bids for both the design and the construction element of the Portland branch. Those have been evaluated. I have not yet received to sign off on the recommendation for awarding of the contracts, but only because our designing construction manager's been on vacation. He is back this week, so I expect this week that I'll sign off on a recommendation on that. We'll get those contracts in place, and really, as soon as the, the design team can start putting together drawings for us, and as soon as we have drawings in place, the, the construction team can set up. So, I'm, I'm hopeful we're going to see, you know, sort of a groundbreaking ceremony sometime in the next two to three months. You know, we'll cross our fingers and, and hope it goes well. And, and I do think, you know, this is one of the things that my boss will tell me later, never say that to Metro Council, but I, I'm really hopeful that, that we'll be ready at the beginning of next fiscal year to open both Parkland and
Okay, I'll put you on the spot with your boss again.
That's okay, she's out of town.
When do you think we might see construction at the main library?
Sure. So, so, the main library's going to be a longer project, and there are elements of that, that I think can start very quickly. So, for example, one thing we know we need to do is replace the steps that go up to the 1908 building, and, and fix the space where we had a, a public statue that, that was removed. So, there's some landscaping things that have to happen out there. Those things can start really pretty quickly. We've got some design work for other elements of the, the project that we'll have to do, but I think there are definitely pieces that have to do with the exterior renovation, renovation of the third floor, that, that can start pretty quickly, and so we'll start seeing incremental phases of, of improvements at Maine.
So, in terms of Maine, and I think we heard we're going to close on some property at Fern Creek. Beyond that, do you have any, do you know anything about when we might actually begin work there?
So, so, Fern Creek, I was just talking to Jeff O'Brien, and the, the variable that we don't control there is, you know, we've got to close on the property, there's an active business on one of those parcels that has to get resolved. And then, we've got some demolition to do there, particularly with a, an abandoned building that may have some, some remediation that has to be done on it. So, it will a lot depend on that, but I, in anticipation of this question, I was kind of calculating it out while I was sitting over there. So, I'm thinking the end of 2023, probably feasible to have something open, but, you know, we've got a, we've got COVID-19 and supply chain and all of that. But I'd say ballpark.
Let me, let me comment on Maine a little bit. I, I think one of the better things that we have done in this community of late is build the three regional libraries. And the regional library for the central city is the main library, and it's not been improved, and this is really, this is an example, I think, of being able to do something that we've really wanted to do, and now have the money to do it. Councilman, did you have?
Thank you, I did. Just to follow up on the Fern Creek branch, and I'm not, I know construction and, well, yeah, we have to get, when do you anticipate some of the design work might take place? When would we be looking at, you know, an R F P for an architect to say, this is what we, or we would, would we take a look at some of the other branches that we've recently done, and?
Well, we, we certainly will, we are continuously reviewing what we've done with some of the other recent branches that we've opened. So, right now, we're in the middle of the design phase for the Parkland library. So, we've had meetings with staff, even at the Middletown branch, which just opened, to talk to them about what works and what didn't really work the way we thought it was going to. So, we'll have to do the design phase, we'll, we'll wrap up the design phase on Parkland. Then, we will have to go through the design phase on Portland. We can do that simultaneously with design for Fern Creek, but one of the questions that still has to be answered is if we're going to need to bid that out, as the Fern Creek Library out as a specific project in order to meet program guidelines for the A R P funding. If so, then, you know, it'll take us a month to, to get bid specs together. We'll put that out to bid and evaluate. So, a couple of months from now, we could be talking about, now that we know where, you know, the land is, assuming that all goes according to plan, you know, we, we could be working on designs pretty soon for that.
So, hopefully by late fall, early winter, we'll be able to start talking about what this
That's right.
building might actually look like.
That's right.
Granted, we're not, you know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll schedule some community meetings. I know the, the Fern, I'm glad to hear that the Fern Creek friends blame Councilman Ingle, because some of them have seemed like they were blaming me. And, and I, it was my first day on the job officially, that's all I'm saying. So, you know, we'll have some public meetings, we'll do, do a design charrette, we'll talk to people about what they want to see in their branch, and we'll engage with people.
Thank you. And again, I just want to reiterate what you've already heard, lots of excitement from the council about all the work being done in libraries. We, you know, have been supportive in the past, and they're really looking forward to what this means for Louisville in the next coming years. So, thank you.
Me too. Thank you all very much.
I also always want to thank the Library Foundation, which I think has some involvement in some of these projects. So, so, we always, they certainly had involvements in the regional library projects, too, and I know they're involved in these projects as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, I think we'll be working on a joint announcement of some capital campaigns around all of these that, that you'll hear more about soon.
Excellent. Thank you so much. So, I don't see anyone else in the queue. I do have one, and I don't, don't think this can be a technical amendment, so I think we'll have to have an amendment. Monica Harmon, being the spendthrift that she is, has suggested that we increase the, the health budget by $47, so that we end up with round numbers, and I'm, I'm serious about that. And, and she's told me that round numbers are extremely important, and will cause problems forever in the future if we don't do this. So, what I would like to do, this is Project L A T 58, which is at $7,449,353. I'd like to increase that to $7,449,400, which will, of course, take the total up by $47, also, and make that a round number at $73,249,400. Is there a motion to do that?
I'd like to make a motion to amend by $47.
All right, there's a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor of that amendment? Say aye.
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 Thank you. You're very welcome, Monica.
I'm not going to ask for a vote.
Any opposed? All right. The amended ordinance is, is before us. I want to thank everybody who showed up here today. There are a lot of people who we did not ask about, but we know all about your projects, they're all described in the project descriptions, and just go make good use of the money. Madam Clerk, you could open the, open the roll, please. The voting is open. Voting is closing.
I can't vote here, I can't vote.
Councilwoman McCray, just, I will wait as long as you'd like. It, it shows you're not voting. Have you voted yes?
She just needs to vote, she was late.
Okay, all right. And I, are you voting yes?
I want to vote on the screen.
All right, so.
I think she's voting.
How do we do that?
She's not showing his absence, but she did add her vote as yes. We don't know why she couldn't vote. It's not showing on her screen. That's what I'm saying. I don't know why she couldn't vote. She's not showing his absence. I don't know if that's why she couldn't vote.
Could you put the screen back up? Well, now, nobody has voted. Do we want to start again?
The motion is yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
All right, the voting is now open.
Thank you.
She did vote no.
Can you vote now?
Yeah, I'm voting no.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sorry for the confusion there. There are nine yes votes, one no vote, and one person not voting. This will be on old business at our council meeting next week. So, thank you again for every, everybody for being here. We will be in recess for 22 minutes, and we'll start promptly at 6 o'clock with the public hearing. Without objection, we're adjourned.
I've got 22 minutes, I don't really got very much.
Look swollen. And she said, "Well, I've got a headache, but I don't know how that..." I said, "Would you do me a favor? Can I touch it?" And it felt hot like an abscess. So, I said, "Would you please get to the E R for me today?" And she promised. Didn't see her for two weeks. She comes in, grabs me, her head was shaved, she went into surgery, and they went four inches down to get the abscess, and the doctor said, "Why did you come today?" And she says, "My counselor made me." And he said, "Would you tell her that they saved your life? They trust us, and they feel safe showing us some really sad things. We're here. You're welcome, honey."
Some of the folks that come in are homeless or houseless, they have no support, they have no foundation. If we could be that for them, then we're here for that as well.